For September 22 order at 3:00 PM. Jody.
Please note council meetings are streamed live and recorded on YouTube. Attendees acknowledge that in accordance with Section 20 Sub 2 of the Access to Information Act and Section 4 Sub C of the Protection of Privacy Act, names, addresses, and other details provided when speaking at a council meeting will be publicly shared. Should you have any questions related to the collection or disclosure of personal information, please contact the Legislative and Advisory Services Division for the Town of High River by sending an email to atip@highriver.ca. That's A-T-I-P-P at highriver.ca.
Thanks, Jody. I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Nychuk that council adopt the agenda for the regular council meeting September 22 as presented.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Good. All in favor? Carrie? I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Jones that council adopts a September 8, 2025 regular council meeting minutes as presented.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
Good. All in favor? Carrie? One delegation today from the High River Library Board, Ruthann, and Jody's going to join her if we have any questions on liaison information.
All right, the library board has prepared a video that will ask our IT staff to play for us.
The library is a vital part of town life and public safety around it is a shared priority. This short presentation outlines concerns and simple, cost-effective solutions that benefit staff, patrons, and the community. Shared safety means shared responsibility. Town infrastructure and public safety don't stop at the library door. Library patrons are town residents. Staff and board members often leave in the dark, especially during the winter months. Let's work together to prevent incidents before they happen. Our public library sits in a quiet standalone location. This is both a strength and a challenge. The peaceful setting makes the library a welcoming destination, but it also means the building is more isolated, especially during evenings and off-peak hours. That quiet setting creates comfort, but also vulnerability. With fewer people around to witness or intervene, the risk of unwanted activity naturally increases. That's why proactive safety measures like lighting, cameras, and secure staff access are so important here. A recent real-world incident raised serious questions, and aggressive visitor filmed underage patrons. He complained of noise. It was teen night. He verbally threatened to return. Staff successfully de-escalated, but fear and uncertainty remain. And the question lingers, what if he'd waited outside? What if he returns? While the staff member captured his image on her phone, she shouldn't have to. These were young students. We, the library, and the town should protect not only our patrons, but our staff. An interior security camera would have been a benefit to everyone. While the front entrance is well-lit, there are still many blind spots. Beyond that, the street and sidewalk plunge into darkness. It's difficult to identify people, or even see snow and ice when going to a vehicle. The library seeks to address the safety of all visitors. We believe that security cameras, both inside and outside, announced with clear signage in the building and on the website, would help reassure staff and patrons alike. But there are key questions to address. If security cameras are installed, where will the feed go? Options include routing the feed to a town's security system, if one exists, motion-activated recordings stored in the cloud or on a local server. If the town manages the cameras, how will the library access footage when needed? What process would be in place for sharing, and what criteria would guide that? We're open to the town's guidance on the best approach. Let's work together. These are our residents, our staff, our neighbors. Let's make sure their visits to the library are not only enriching, but safe. We appreciate the town's ongoing support and hope we can move forward on this together, because when safety is shared, everyone benefits. Together, we can ensure the library remains a place of learning, community, and trust.
How would you like to lock in a dirt-cheap electricity rate for the next...
That sounds great.
Sorry, I'm not selling that.
Go ahead, Ruthann.
So I guess you're asking what the ask is. Okay. So the library, of which I sit on the board, and I am the treasurer, and the Finance and Planning Committee lead, we're asking you to request or support a low-cost pilot to improve safety and incidence view at the hospital, at the library. Sorry, I'm on that word, too. Getting confused. We have an option that is recommended to have six cameras, pilot cameras, not to exceed a budget of $2,500, to be installed by the town facilities. We will post clear signage from the library's privacy policy, and in return, 90 days with a brief report of incidents captured, staff feedback, any blind spots, and go/no-go recommendations for Phase 2 of what we classify as the project. This is a measured, privacy-respecting approach that lets us learn before we scale up. If council requests, I do have two other options that I can present, but this was a low-cost, easy-to-install, easy-to-start, to monitor right away. I believe that the library needs to have more secure visibility around the neighborhood, and I do believe that the incident that happened at the library isn't an isolated one. I understand from RCMP that people seem to be getting angrier these days. The library is an open spot to vent such anger. But I think we need to protect not only the people in the library, but the people outside the library as they approach it, and security cameras were the best way to do that. And again, a low-cost mechanism for doing that. I do have a proposal that I can give to council on what that might look like. I also, I believe I provided Jody, I sent an email to Chris and Jody, I believe, that had a privacy policy and a memorandum of understanding with respect to who at the library would have access to the videos once they were captured, because privacy is one of the biggest issues that people speak about when it comes to video surveillance. Any questions on that?
Yeah, thanks, Ruthann. Jody, can you tell us how our, like how other cameras work as far as privacy policy and legalities, and who monitors it? I know we've got cameras at the rec center, but is there other facilities that we have cameras?
I don't believe that we have other facilities with cameras. However, the cameras that have been installed are not under a privacy policy. We do have a policy that's in development, so the current cameras are, I don't want to say not falling under a current policy, but I don't feel that we have the appropriate policy in place to cover what those cameras are and their intent.
Okay. Counselor Jones.
Did Riley just want to add to what she said?
Sorry.
Oh, just a clarification. We also have Public Works and the Water Treatment Plant.
Public Works and the Water Treatment Plant all have cameras, right? Okay. And who monitors those? Does each facility monitor their own cameras? Like where do those feeds go?
Hello?
All three facilities record locally to a server within that building. The access, depending on the building, is vastly different. REC has a much different purpose than the other buildings, so it is much wider, the availability of those cameras is much wider. So for example, customer service uses it to monitor hallways when the staffing is low and at night. So it gives them a view of the building without having to go patrol the building. So it's used for a much broader purpose. When we get into Public Works or the Water Treatment Plant, that system's pretty restricted. It's only used in the case of theft, or if there's a very specific reason to go into the system. In that case, access is very limited. I think IT and there's the manager and one of the supervisors, if I believe correctly. I could be wrong on that one, but it's a very limited scope in terms of who has access, whereas REC has a very broad access because of the need of managing that building.
Good.
Just to add to Jody's policy, or point around policy, that is definitely something that needs work and has been on the radar. Now I'm stepping on Sonia's toes, so she'll be up here next, but it is something we are aware of, and the current policies aren't sufficient for what we have, and it is something that is on the to-do list to clean up and address.
Good. Thank you. Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. I have a question. You referred to an incident that happened. Was that incident dealt with properly, or how was it dealt with? And also, are there, what is sort of the amount of incidences that happened that have brought forward the camera issue?
The incident was the main instigator of this request. There are other reasons for the request with regards to access to the facility and not being able to see who's around there when you leave. One that I brought up, being probably the senior member of the board, was that leaving at night, when we go to our board meetings, is usually in the dark, and I have to access through the staff doors out into a dark parking lot for which I can't see anyone that's around. Lighting is fine there. I can see with the lighting, but there are opportunities for anyone to come from anywhere in that area, and the security, if there was, or if the people knew there was a security camera, it reduces the possibility of that incident happening. The gentleman at the library that happened that night managed to be defused by one of the staff. He did leave after several moments and has threatened to come back. That threat was then relayed to the RCMP, who at the time said they were aware of the gentleman, apparently. He was well-known to them, and that he frequents the library all the time. So the incident just meant that he had gone over the line. He was upset enough to start to threaten staff, and he did manage to leave, but again, the statement was there. What if he came back? He threatened to come back the following Thursday, which again was teen night, and the board decided that we would go and sit in the library to ensure that nothing happened. Again, if we had had camera, video of him, the RCMP could have done something, which they didn't have. When I look at the video and the security around it, the library's not asking for a long term. I've seen and I've investigated about the privacy protection is that we don't need access to it, only if something happens to be able to confirm what has happened. So I believe there's a 30 or 40-day window that you can keep videos, and then you either destroy them or you record over them. So it wasn't as, it's a long-term access to the video. It's just simply if something happens, we have the video to prove that it happened, and that the RCMP could deal with it.
Okay.
And the cost, to me, was very, very low for having to do that, even if we put it into the cloud. The cost of accessing is minimal compared to the security that provides the staff, to patrons, and board members.
Yeah, the deterrent alone is a big deal, so. Go ahead, sorry, Jenny.
Oh, I was just going to say, yeah, I understand, like, you know, signage and things like that. So if you were leaving, though, at the end of the night, like, if you don't have access to, look at that, how would you know if somebody was out there?
Well, I'm not concerned. I'm really about being somewhere, if someone's out there and they do something, they're on camera. So if someone was going to attack me, and they did, at least you would know who did it. It's like someone attacking me on the street and leaving me there. Well, you wouldn't know who it was, and you wouldn't know what to do with me.
Right.
So, okay. We have spoken about lighting before, but I know the town has looked after lighting quite sufficiently, and there is, I believe, something in the works with regards to the parking at the front.
Right.
And I believe there is something in the works to look at the parking at the back for staff parking, so I removed that from my request.
Good. Yeah, no, and the parking issue, and that, that's definitely on the table, but it's still under discussion and design and everything. It's a, that's a big number to start to fix that.
It was already in my video before I had the opportunity to go back and change it, so sorry. I could have deleted it.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for taking the time to bring this and share it with everybody. Understanding all of your concerns, I also wanted to ask if you've looked into the SEPTED program, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. It's something that you could collaborate with the local RCMP to set the facility up for the best possible safety, whether that be cameras. Ultimately, you want their placement to be most effective, and they're going to be able to share their expertise as to what's happening in the community. It's a program that is available for everybody, and I think in collaboration with something like that, we would check off all the boxes in your report, not just the cameras, which I think is a good addition, but a piece of your overall safety.
Yeah, I've spoken with the RCMP, but only with respect to the cameras and the incidents that took place.
And in the SEPTED program, I just, I brought a couple of notes, and why SEPTED matters to the library. In an isolated location, the quiet setting makes it welcoming but more vulnerable. Evening hours, your staff and patrons leaving in the dark, blind spots, youth safety. By applying the SEPTED, the library and town can implement cost-effective preventive measures, so proactive, just like you coming here today. Better lighting is one of the recommendations, which we are addressing, cameras, signage, of course, and secure accesses that protect yourselves as well as the visitors of the library. So in addition to this that you're bringing, I think it would be great to collaborate with that particular program. I can send the information if you're interested.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to you, Jenny. Pardon me? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. I do have one other question. Has the board talked about funding this through their reserve program at all, the reserve, unrestricted reserve funds at all?
So we consider this an operating cost. We don't consider it something that comes out of a reserve fund. There's allocations for the reserve fund, and tapping into that all the time for something that we believe to be an operating cost just reduces that reserve fund for us. And I do have a document that I am providing the town with, with respect to the reserve as it comes, when our budgeting comes up. Okay, thank you.
So moving forward on this pilot project, Ruthann, can you get administration, Chris, Jody, whatever quote you have, the $2,500, and kind of what that would look like, and then we can bring that back to the next council meeting and decide whether that's something council wants to do?
Sure.
Because I don't, we don't have anything on that yet, do we? Jody?
We did have some preliminary numbers, but this new $2,500 one, I don't think I've seen that one yet.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll get that, get that to Jody, and then we'll bring that back to the next, whatever, October 13 meeting, and we'll, it's not a big number, so, but it's council's decision.
14.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. Could I add to that, perhaps? I don't believe the museum or the Highwood Center, those are three public facilities that we own, and if we're going to do it for one, should we be looking at it for all three? Just a suggestion.
Chris just sucked all the air out of the room.
To add to that list would be Shepherd Family Park, too. Yeah, we do have a few, I mean, essentially owned public facilities like that.
Yeah.
And even outside this building, I don't believe there are any cameras around outside, out back, out front, and we've had crowds.
You mean, sorry, specifically to Town Hall?
Yeah.
I believe there's some cameras here, but the county, I think there's one at the front door.
I don't know.
Just look into it for the next council.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Ruthann. Appreciate it. Great video, by the way.
Thank you.
Aquatics program, Sam?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today I've prepared an update for you on our aquatics programming. There are a couple different areas I want to speak to, so bear with me. The pool, as you know, is closing on October 3. With that, we plan to pause all three-month and annual memberships. Upon reopening, those memberships will be reactivated with an extra month added to the end. As you'll recall, May 2025, council approved the month-long extensions for any closures that were five days or longer, being that this one is over three months, that definitely qualifies. Those who wish to keep their passes active to access other areas and other amenities may do so through customer service. They just have to request that. Those who choose to get a refund instead for the remaining time on their pass will not receive the extension of the one month. This is to encourage those to maintain This is to encourage those to maintain their membership and come back when we reopen. In light of the closure, we have added a new dryland class called Strength and Stretch. This class will be an all-abilities class combining balance, strength, and stretching. It's completely accessible from a chair, which allows it to be inclusive and hit that accessibility. It's planned to be offered twice a week right now, and that's based on instructor and facility availability. The cost of the class will be the drop-in rate, which is the same as AquaFit costs now, so there will be no extradition for patrons. Patrons are encouraged to maintain their membership or purchase a 10-pass if they prefer. They can also just pay the daily drop-in rate. Once the pool does reopen, with our new basin, we are gonna have an adjustment to programming due to the nature of the basin's depth and size. Unfortunately, lane swim, large AquaFit classes, school swim lessons, and any swim lessons past swimmer two, including aquatics leadership programs, will no longer be offered. We will be able to run shallow-water AquaFit classes, and we're hoping to increase the number of these classes to accommodate the smaller sizes. This is dependent on instructor availability. We'll also be adding swim workshops. This will allow patrons and families to work on specific swim skills that may not be covered in those lower levels. Next, I wanted to mention the adjustment of pool hours of the new basin. Due to the nature of the new basin, we're hoping to be closing at 9:00 PM, Monday to Friday, and 8:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. Currently, from 9:00 till 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, we offer lane swim, and same with that 8:00 to 10:00 time period on Saturday and Sunday. The depth of the new pool doesn't allow for lane swim, as well as the length. We'll be able to offer it again once the old basin resumes. Currently, we see two to seven people between 9:00 and 10:00 PM, Monday to Friday, for lane swim, and on the weekends from 8:00 to 10:00 PM, zero to four people. When the project is fully complete, we can determine the feasibility of returning to original hours or maintaining the current or the new hours. Lastly, we want to update you on the price of rentals for the new basin. We'll continue to use the current rates once, or until construction ends. The mini-lap pool will be renting out at the cost of one lane, as it is smaller, once again, not as deep, and the entire pool, we rent it out at the cost of the current entire pool, and that way, we're just maintaining that ability and access for all. Does council have any comments or questions at this time?
Thanks, Sam. Key dates, so October 3rd, it closes, the whole thing closes, right? We're done for three months.
Correct.
The date the new basin opens, January 15th?
We've been informed mid-January.
Okay.
There's no solid date on that yet.
No solid date, but it's...
Yeah, that's the goal.
Welcome to construction. And then, schedule is, then June will be the full opening of the whole expansion, rental, everything will be done.
That's the hopes.
Okay. Counselor Nychuk.
Thanks, Mr. Snodgrass. Not related to dates, but coming back to patrons and the concessions we're giving in terms of facility being unavailable or programs being disrupted. What's the general response been as of late with that? You know, I've had people from the community tell me their opinion, but it'd be nice to know what you see or hear on a daily basis, if there is that kind of feedback, just to give us some idea that we're on the right track in terms of the compensation for the interruption that we're having right now, so that we're being fair and equitable and people are happy. If you can provide some context on that, I'd appreciate it.
Of course. Honestly, since we announced the longer closure, I personally have found the negative comments have gone down because people now know what to expect. I think it was the constant unknowing of when we're gonna close and reopen that was really frustrating to people, so knowing this length of time, people have the ability to plan. There's been a really good buzz and excitement over the new Strength and Stretch class. I've heard from plenty of people, they are very excited for us to run it, which is great. I think people are disappointed because certain aspects won't be available, however, they do understand it's small pain for long-term gain, and we're doing everything we can to accommodate the best we can with trying to add more classes. So, overall, it actually feels better now than it did before. Yeah.
One other question, because I had this asked of me last week, but when the new pool opens, the old one is still completely closed, correct?
Like, when the new one...
When the new basin, basin...
Yes. Yeah, correct.
When the new basin opens, the old one is still closed until June.
Until June, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
So, we'll just have the one leisure side available.
Got it. Good. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. Thank you, Sam, for bringing this to us today. In the last few weeks, many people that I've talked to that attend the AquaFit program with you, the extra dryland classes you've referred to, are these intended to gear towards the people that are now not going to do the aqua-size?
Yes. The original intention was to give them a place to stay connected and to keep exercising throughout the closure, knowing that we aren't able to offer it as many as we can with AquaFit. That was the original intention. However, the class itself is open to all people, so we've tried to make it broad enough that anybody can join, even those that maybe wouldn't get in the water normally.
Oh, okay, thanks. And then, the programs that you're offering in a dryland capacity, a lot of people rely on the pool for their movement, et cetera. Is the cost the same? So, the pass they hold to swim, they could simply go into any other class?
Yes. So, we are encouraging people to maintain their memberships, so they can just simply come to the class. However, we do understand some people use their memberships for five times a week, and this class will only be twice. So, there might be some that will want to put their memberships on pause and then purchase the daily drop-in or a 10-pass in the meantime. That way, they're getting the most use of their pass. It's completely up to them, and that's been really well-received as well.
Thank you. That might answer a few questions for people.
Of course.
No further questions. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Well done. Highwood Curling Club sponsorship. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. Thank you, council. I'm here to speak to the Highwood Curling Club's request to go 100% and skew from the 50/50 sponsorship agreement. As people, as council and mayor know, and administration, previously there was work done to transfer them from a leaseholder to a user group in the past. Part of that agreement was the 50/50 split of the sponsorship income coming in from the Highwood Curling Club. The Curling Club, as we're here today, has asked for the full sponsorship amount. We get a lot of sponsorship requirements frequently at the Bob Snodgrass Recreation Complex. We do have another shared agreement with the Highwood, with the High River Flyers, who have an agreement in place to sell sponsorship on the boards, and they keep 100% of that income. The current policy outside of that agreement does not contemplate user groups selling sponsorship within the facility. And with that, that is why the recommendation I'm putting forth is that we status quo the 50/50 split and have council direct administration to bring forth an updated sponsorship policy that would set a fair process across the board for a lot of the user groups and a lot of spaces within the, outside of the complex and within the complex. We have a lot of user groups who are very committed to this community and do a lot of great work, and we know from them, funding and all that plays a key role in their day-to-day. So, with keeping the status quo, it keeps things fair across the board until we have a proper and updated policy in place, and then at the same time, if we go the other way, we are opening up ourselves a lot, opening ourselves to similar requests coming from similar user groups, not just for within the facility, but for open spaces and parks in this community. At that point, right now, I'd like to answer any questions or concerns council may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. I agree with you 100% that we've got a mixed bag of sponsorship going on over there that isn't consistent and creates, and has been that way for a long time, so we need to get that dealt with. In us keeping the 50%, of the sponsorship, I know it's not a lot of money, but the Curling Club is also asking for sound baffles in there, you know? So, the 50/50 split, okay, like, this is kind of where I'm at with, you know, having, helping to offset some of those costs of, to improve that surface, too, right? Not the surface, but the environment in that facility, so I don't really know where, how much the quote on the, well, we do have the quote on the baffles from the last time, don't we? We've got options and quotes, so we need to look at that, too, to get that taken care Yeah, there's a few things that need to be discussed on that. Counselor Jones?
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. I have a question. Are we discussing the policy that was presented at all, or just the Curling Club ask?
Today?
Yeah.
Just the Curling Club.
Because I know there, to a point there was like a policy present, but when we discuss, my concern is that if we say, you know, like, one group gets this and another group gets that, it does come across as unfair. We also need to preface this in a way that says, we have, we are giving you this opportunity to raise funds by doing this, rather than we are taking half your funds. Do you know what I mean? The way it comes across. So, in a policy, it makes sense to share it that way, that every user group, no matter who you are, has that ability to raise funds by doing it, by doing this. I do find the policy was just a little bit vague in some of that, like, how many boards are there on the rink? How many boards are there in the Curling Center? How many? I know there were different ways of raising the funds. So, I do feel that a policy and also given, sort of presented in the correct way will come across in a better light than just saying, "Sorry, you can't, you know, you can't fundraise this way," right? I do like the idea of sharing the funds to some degree, and because they are asking for other things from the town, like these baffles or other user groups as well, that do cost money. And maintaining those signs, maintaining the signage, maintaining the space, making sure they meet the criteria, all takes town time, your time, to do so. So, I just think we've got to be really careful about how we put this forward in a positive way, rather than a negative way.
Yeah, and the 50/50 is what's currently written in their user, in the Curling Club's user agreement, right? So, I'm totally okay with staying with that now, and if that needs to get revisited after we look at the whole scope of things, then absolutely. No further questions, so I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Walsh that council direct administration to consult with the user groups on the proposed draft updated sponsorship policy, and that council direct administration to maintain the existing 50/50 cost-share agreement on sponsorship within the Highwood Curling Club.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Strategic priorities chart, quarterly update. Chris?
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. As council's aware, we had a strategic quarterly update meeting last Monday, where we reviewed council's top five in the next list, as well as the operational priorities. One major significant change that will be taking place on the top five that council sees today is that we're taking the town farm outdoor rink off the list because the slab is being poured, it's in the process of curing, and the boards are already constructed and ready to be placed. So, that project is relatively complete, but we're replacing that with a land use bylaw review and focusing on the traditional neighborhood district. Staff will be coming forward with a scope and a timeline review on October the 13th regular meeting, and with the intent to be kicking off this whole overall project in January with presentation to the public as well. Since it is an amendment to the land use bylaw, it does require public engagement and consultation with both the development community and residents, and so we expect that that will take some time, and to kick that off in January is probably the appropriate timeframe to do that. The other change that you see on the next list is that, right now, it's worded gravel road rehab, but this is in response to the complaints that we've been getting about 112th Street, 64th Street, as well as Longview Trail, and certainly there's others, 88th Street, south of the roundabout. And it's probably, I know those are the terms we used last Monday, but we might want to adjust those words to something more appropriate to reflect those four roads in particular, about getting them into a much better state to reduce dust, as well as their condition. And so, those are the two major changes that we've seen within the updated chart and on council's areas of influence, and that's the rationale for the recommendation before council today. Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass.
Thanks, Chris. Counselor Nychuk?
Thanks, Mr. Snodgrass. Maybe it was, that was up there for the topic prior, so maybe I can keep it to comments after we get through the agenda. It was related back to the sponsorship, so...
Did I miss you on that?
Yeah. I came in at the very back end, but we were kind of, we were kind of wrapping it up, and I had a thought, but that's okay. It's all good. Didn't change, didn't change the course of world events, so it's all good. I can leave it, I can leave that till...
Okay. Let's finish this one, and then we'll rewind you back into that one, in your counselor report. You all good? Okay, on the strategic priorities chart, I agree, Chris, the gravel road rehab doesn't describe exactly what we're doing, so this is primarily three, three roads, 112th on the northeast, 88th off the south roundabout, and Longview Trail is the other, is the other road that's in dire need of some rehab and repair. But there's also 64th and River Road going out of town. These are all roads that are our responsibilities that need, that need to be addressed, but the three that I think are top priority is, of course, 112th, it's a dust bowl out there right now, 88th and Longview Trail. So, question on 112th, just while we're on the topic, it's, it's pretty messy out there. So, do we got some, something that we're going to do to do some dust control that'll hold for more than an hour and a half?
Yes, staff are looking at the option with our previous applicator, Syntet Farms, looking at using, looking at a wax product similar to the one that was provided by our local resident, and looking at the timeline of getting something out there. In the interim, if we can't get something applied on the wax side of things quickly, we are looking at using a brine solution, that calcium chloride or magnesium chloride to keep the dust down. We just may have to apply that on a weekly basis until the wax is applied.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Kinghorn that council adopt the top five strategic priorities as follows, the recycling composting program, the skate park land use bylaw review, the northeast area structure plan, the water strategy, and that council adopt the updated next list by adding 112th, 88th, and Longview Trail road rehab plans, and that council adopt the updated strategic priorities chart and work program as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. You have that motion.
Okay. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Nychuk, my apologies, missed you on the last one, so we'll go back to the sponsorship policy. You had some questions or comments?
Yeah, can I say, I'm drawing a blank now, but I'll bring it back. No, honestly, I was, yeah, I was being serious with that, it was in my head, and then it went away, but... Oh, no, 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 I got it, I got it, I got it. No, no, no. In terms of that policy coming back to, I was gonna say us, but I'll say council because we're in the midst of seeing where that will go during this, during this election run, so that, that policy coming back to council, is there a, is there a timing on that? Did I, did I miss something? back to council, is there a, is there a timing on that? Did I, did I miss something somewhere? Because that policy is from, the one that's existing right now is 2014, was that right? So if we're, if we're talking about making it better, when are we, when are we planning to make it better? Or when are some suggestions, ideas going to come, going to come to a council for consideration?
Certainly considering, considering the amount of work and engagement that has to take place with some of the user groups to get a better understanding of all their agreements and, and designing a policy that caters to those differing agreements potentially and their needs. I would anticipate that we'd be bringing back a policy sometime in the first quarter of 2026 as a draft to the new council.
Okay, thanks. And in that, I had, I don't know what road you guys have gone down so far, but clearly we have a focus on what goes on within BSRC. I know that policy that exists right now talks about all town-owned facilities, parks, et cetera, et cetera. I might suggest, and maybe the rest of council may not agree, but it might be prudent to have a policy that maybe carves that up a little bit, meaning that there's some indoor policy and some outdoor policy. I know that previous councils have worked hard on signage in the public purvey outdoors. I think advertising for user groups kind of falls into that as well. And it might, it might be prudent to have them somewhat separate, an inside versus an outside policy and what that would mean and what that would look like. But I'll just leave that with you, Chris. Thank you.
And Mayor Snodgrass, through the Counselor Nychuk, I think the intent we heard loud and clear when we were reviewing the field analysis earlier in 2024 was that sponsorship on some of the outdoor aspects of things, there was real concerns about how that could turn into visual litter. And I think, you know, understanding that perspective, that would be some, that would be one of the approaches we would take for the outside and sever, and create within that existing sponsorship policy kind of two, two tiers.
You all good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we're going back to, sorry, not back to anything, but councillor board committee reports. Anybody? Nothing? Public comments, anything? I know Paula, you had a request to me to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Elliott. I have two things I'd like to speak towards, actually. The first one is, and I don't know if this is a conflict of interest or not, I am a casual employee at the library. And I'd also like to speak as a concerned citizen. So there is a movement afoot where libraries are under attack, maybe not physically at this point, but they're certainly being closed down. And that has happened here in Alberta. They're being attacked by a large segment of the population who believes that the activities that go on in a library are too woke. So I don't know what the solution to that is, but it probably would be best to be proactive than reactive in terms of security. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and I've written just a few things here. It was just a mere 148 years ago, on today, September 22nd, that Treaty VII was signed. Those 148 years have been just a blink of the eye compared to the vast scope of time during which the indigenous nations have made this land their home. Millennia, time immemorial. I am committed to acknowledging my relationship with the land, its beings, and the teachings of the Siksa, the Pekani, and the Kainai, the Sitzina, the Ithaka Nakota, that's the correct name for Stony Nakota, and the Mati Nation of Alberta within Battle River Territory. I am beyond grateful and indebted to the original people of this land, and I thank them for their outrageous generosity and patience. And I know that this component of our civilization, you, your role mostly is to collect taxes, to maintain the infrastructure on this town. This town wouldn't be present without the agreement of Treaty VII. And so I just want to recognize that. And I also want to mention, you know, beyond collecting taxes to maintain infrastructure, there, there is rightly a sense of stewardship, of proper stewardship of this gorgeous country, this land. And I really want to thank each and one, each and every councillor and you, Craig Mayor, for your unanimous support in opposing the coal mining that would destroy the headwaters of the water that we rely on. Water protectors are needed. And in this changing landscape of politics and priorities and globalization and morals, it behooves us to take care of this gorgeous land in partnership with the people who are our hosts. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Public comments?
Any specific subject?
Pardon me?
Any specific subject?
Usually according to the agenda, but we're a little bit loose on it. So what do you got?
I would personally like to talk about the High River, or High Country Drive corridor that you guys have been discussing.
Yeah. Oh, what's your name, sir?
Oh, Dale Serson, sorry.
Okay.
I just, I know there's a proposal to start banning sections of parking along that road.
Not, we've never heard that, nope.
You never heard that?
Of banning parking?
Well, not banning, but putting no, no parking zones in sections along that road, on the one side of the road. That was in the...
Might be in a report or something as an option, but...
Yeah, it was one of the options that you guys were looking at. But now that we're in phase two, most of the people that live along, on that road itself, have no idea that this is even being discussed. You guys, when I read the report from all the discussions and whatnot that you guys have had, or it was last year that most of them took place.
Yeah.
The vast majority of the comments you guys received were people that don't actually live on the road, they just live near the road and they use the road.
Okay.
My concerns, I live right across the street from the Spray Park.
Yeah.
And there is no visibility issues if you do the speed limit. It's 30 kilometers an hour through there.
Yeah.
And people don't. They come ripping through there, 60, 70. I've seen them do even more.
Wouldn't agree more.
Yes. My concern is if any parking is, no parking zones are put in there, in my eyes, as a truck driver for the last 30 years, you're only making more room for them to go even faster.
Right?
So, and my concern is, if that is an idea you're looking at, what is your contingency plan for where we're going to put all our vehicles? There's a lot of multifamilies that live along that street in those houses. They have many vehicles. My neighbor right beside me has six vehicles for the three families that they live with. We personally have two adult children living with us. We have four vehicles on the street. We, we can't park more than two in front of our home on our side. We've got to put them somewhere. So when you discuss it again in the future, or whenever you're planning on it, give us a contingency plan. Where are we supposed to park all these vehicles, on our front lawns? I mean, that's my concern is, and I don't know if any of that has been brought up in the past or not, I, I just wanted it to be heard, that's all.
I appreciate it.
I missed all these discussions. I know you guys went to the golf course and talked to golfers, you know, about the crossing there, as well as the road itself.
Yeah, I don't know, there was other open houses and stuff too.
Yeah, there was. There was somebody that, there was, there was one at the Spray Park itself. It wasn't very well-known to the public. Like I said, I live right across the street from the Spray Park. I had no idea that it happened there, you know? Maybe if it was advertised a little bit more often, when you guys have these, you know, subjects going around, you're discussing them and whatnot, getting feedback. It'd be nice if you would actually, I don't know, send a flyer out or something to the people that it affects the most, and that's the people that actually live on the street itself.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to be heard.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
So on, on the, on that report though, Dale, you know, it is right now just a report.
Yes.
It's, you know, it's...
Well, I said you're entering phase two of the project now?
Well, that, so the phase one, phase two, I don't know where that, what that is or what it all means, but in my, in my view of High Country Drive right now, there's only one thing that needs to be dealt with right now, and that's the intersection.
The golf course one?
The golf course intersection. A decision needs to be made quickly with the next council as to, as to what we're doing on that, on that intersection. Get that intersection done and then council has, okay, what do you want to do? Because the whole High Country Drive was not designed properly. It goes from that wide, where it's a freeway, to when it hits you, it's now this wide and the vehicles, and it's on a corner, and there's a spray park, pump track, playground.
But if they're doing 30, they're going, should be going around.
Yeah, if they're doing 30, yeah, you and I both know how well that...
Can I speak to the golf course crossing as well?
Sure.
I golf all around the US. I golf all around Canada. I've been to many, many, many golf courses where you cross roads consistently in the golf course.
Yeah.
Not one of them's ever had a crossing. They put a sign up there saying, watch for traffic.
Right.
And to have a specialized crossing just for golf carts, that's fine, if you want to do that. Why can't you just put a pedestrian crossing up there? When they drive up, they can hit the button and drive across.
Yeah, that's been discussed. And there is mixed feedback from, from both traffic guys and the golf course on, on that. So that's what the next council's going to chew on pretty quick.
Okay.
Welcome to Lions Den, so, yeah.
Appreciate your help.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate you listening to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further comments? I didn't have anybody else. Any Dale wanted to? Council correspondents requiring action. Municipal displays of respect. Royal Canadian Legion asks for a motion from Counselor Nychuk that council authorize the admin building be illuminated red, white, and purple on November 11th in recognition of Remembrance Day.
Happy to give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Good. All in favor? Carried. Foothills Country Hospice Society Gala sponsorship, annual thing that we do. Ask for a motion, Counselor Jones, that council direct administration to donate $2,500 to the big, to be a Big Top Carousel sponsor for the Foothills Country Hospice Society under the Big Top or Carnival Community and Compassion Collide Gala.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
Good. This is a ratification from a letter I signed last week that had unanimous consent for me to sign from council. We just need to deal with it in the council meeting now. So ask for a motion from Counselor Walsh that council approve, approve the mayor to sign the advocacy letter in support of Foothills Community Coalition for the proposal for the Foothills region to be selected as a Kickstand Integrated Youth Services Hub prior to the council meeting. Counselor Walsh, sorry.
I think we missed asking them to vote in the last one.
Oh, did I miss the vote? Did I? Did I just say carried?
No, you just carried on.
I just circled it. I just carried on? Okay, sorry. Back to Counselor Jones's motion on Foothills Country Hospice. Welcome to election season. Donating $2,500. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Now back to the Kickstand Integrated Youth Services Hub. Counselor Walsh motion. All in favor? Thank you. It's like watching Wally Cooy at an auction. Correspondents regarding the Wales Theater for information for council, and council correspondents for information regarding 605, of course, and correspondents regarding from the 2024 Jasper National Park wildfires. So with that, ends the agenda. Meeting adjourned at 3:57 PM. Thank you very much.